Thank you. We're here for the purposes of the annual meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the annual meeting to order, please. And for those who are able, let's rise, remove cover, and like to believe.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the annual meeting, we will be seeking a nomination for a chairperson to preside over the annual meeting. At this time, I'd like to call for nomination of chairperson to preside over the annual meeting.
I'd make a motion that Brian Giezzi serve as our annual meeting chairperson.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second. Do we want to do any other motions?
Are there any other nominations?
Yeah. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? For the third and final time, are there any other nominations? Okay, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Our current board clerk, Pat Reschewski, will serve as the clerk of annual meeting according to state statute 120.10. We need to dispense of the 2018 annual meeting minutes. I need a motion to approve and dispense with the reading of the minutes of the October 16th, 2018 annual meeting.
Second.
We have a first and a second.
Go me and wherever.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. At this time, we're gonna, we will now ask Terry to give us a report on the state of the district.
All right. Thank you. So I have a letter prepared, but I just wanted to say on the front end that this annual meeting gives us an opportunity as a district to celebrate and share some of the great things that have happened and then also talk about this year's, this coming year's budget that we're already in and then talk about some of the concerns that we have moving forward. So I'm gonna read the letter to the community. Dear Nacusa District Community Members, the title of my notes are "Meeting Today's Tomorrow Student Needs and Planning for a Fiscally Sustainable Future." For several years, the Nacusa Board of Education, the staff, and our leadership team have focused on improvement for all students. And this letter can be found in your little booklet. So we've been focused on the improvement for all students. As with any change effort, change occurs incrementally over time. I am proud to lead this great district and report to you both our areas of growth as well as our areas of challenge. We are proud that our district earned exceeds expectations on Wisconsin's report card in 1819, that was last school year. We look forward to continuing this positive trend going forward. Our Wise Academy, the online school, has exploded in enrollment. We surged from 98 students during the 1819 school year to 148 students in this current school year. And that is our virtual school that serves kids from around the state. To keep us focused on continual improvement, the Nacusa Strategic Plan has three main focuses: high-leverage instructional strategies, socio-emotional learning, and social justice and inclusion. What have we achieved? All teaching staff are receiving professional development aligned to student needs, especially but not limited to literacy, math, and science. We are effectively using data to help teachers decide how to best help individual students grow. All teaching staff have been trained in trauma-sensitive schools. When a child experiences trauma, it affects their learning and their behavior. Becoming trauma-sensitive means teachers learn effective strategies to recognize and de-escalate situations. We are implementing, implementing as a district, many different strategies to build ownership by the students of our schools, engaging them in proactive and positive activities to help them feel a sense of belonging and safety, which in turn creates a more safe, productive school. Across the district for language arts instruction, we have implemented the Reader-Writers Workshop approach, which is designed to deliver an equitable curriculum for all students. Special education and regular education staff are working more closely together to design a more cohesive education for all learners. Inclusion activities recognize that there is strength and beauty in our diversity. Nacusa High School has continued to partner with Midstate Technical College to expand opportunities for Nacusa High School students to earn college credit while in high school. By the numbers for the 1819 school year, we had 123 students enrolled in dual-credit courses. We had 364 credits earned by high school students. And the tuition that our students will be saving as they pursue their secondary educations is $53,900. Nacusa High School continues to challenge students to take advanced placement course offerings while in high school. These offerings have increased and more students have access to the rigors of college-level coursework. By taking the advanced placement exam, students also have the potential to earn college-level credits. By the numbers, in 1617, we had 27 students take AP courses. 1718, we had 25, and last year during the 1819 school year, we had 84 students taking AP courses. So, facing our next challenge, planning for a fiscally sustainable future. Since 2010, the amount of revenue the district is able to receive in property taxes and state aid has decreased by over $1 million. For the past four years, the district's expenses have exceeded revenues. The board with reluctance has used fund balance to avoid cutting programs. We continually examine operations to find efficiencies such as employee benefits, bus routes, and food service. We have also adjusted professional staff salaries to remain competitive. The labor market for teachers is highly competitive, and we need to continue to attract and retain the best teachers for our students. We have also focused on continuous improvement for student learning. We've identified a cost of $1.8 million to replace our track, which is no longer usable, which includes improving drainage as well as associated infrastructure at the high school. We've also identified necessary student supports and program improvements to prepare students for today's careers and post-secondary options. So we do have unmet needs as a district. For the first time in several years, the 1920 budget maintains last year's level of staff and programs. Our revenue is controlled by the state's revenue limit. We cannot repair the track or further invest in educational programming that keeps our students on par with what they need for their future success. We are taking a proactive approach and examining the options on how to balance our student needs with the community's priorities in years to come. You will be receiving a survey soon. That survey will ask you for input on several issues we are facing as a district. Your input will guide the Board of Education's decision. Please expect the survey during November as we intend then to examine the results to prepare a proposal for April 2020. Thank you for your support of the Nacusa School District. Sincerely, Mr. Whitmore. Any questions on that?
Thank you very much, Mr. Whitmore.
You bet.
Some things to be very excited about there. And there are some unmet needs, and I think we'll touch on those again here in just a little bit. I think we're prepared to move on to Ms. Lynn Knight. This is going to be the Treasury Report and hearing of the 2019-2020 budget.
Just waiting for my screen to come up.
Could I just share then what you have in front of you? You actually have a colored version. This is the updated strategic plan for this current school year. So what you'll find in here, each school inside has gone through and updated and actually, also on the backside, you'll see some of the accomplishments that we're, you know, we need to celebrate from the last school year. So this really highlights the great work that's happening in our schools and then also really asks for celebration in some of the work that's been completed at school, so. I've done Mrs.'s name. It's your turn.
You love technology, but sometimes.
I know. That taco, or that little device. But you ought to do something. Well, does anybody want to talk, the principals? Anything in our strategic plan that you think the board could? Yeah, certainly we'll have a chance to look at it, but we're waiting. Looks like, you want to say something, Kate?
About the strategic plan?
No?
Correct.
Or not really?
Not really, yeah.
Okay.
If you want to.
Give me two seconds, I'll have it up and going for it.
Of course, when I need it. Okay, so I'll start with the Treasuries Report from 2018-19. That's gonna be on page six. I'm not gonna go through it line by line. So I'm just gonna let you review it at your leisure. Just know that in 2018-19, we were in the red by $1,292 in funds. So I'll move on to our presentation. There we go. Thank you, Brian. So this is the October 22nd Annual Meeting, 2018-20. I just thought that was so cute.
Those are two Humke kids, right? Playing with my web screen.
So with some input from Mr. Giezzi, I eliminated the revenue limit worksheet from my presentation. So it is in your packet on page, I'm just picking it up, on page 13. So just so you know, that the revenue limit worksheet basically gives the district authority to receive revenue from property taxes and from state aid. And it basically puts a cap on how much revenue you can receive. There are three main variables to that worksheet. There's FTEs, equalized value, and state aid. And you can see the change between 1819 and 1920. We're gonna go through each one of those in detail and see what the history of those items are. So this is our full-time equivalency. These are students that we actually receive funding on. And you can see for the past nine years, we have steadily declined. In the past three years, the decline has not been so steep. So we are starting to, you know, kind of even out a little bit. But that, it's a, it's a pretty shocking visual, I guess is what I can say. The next visual is our equalized value. Again, another shocking graph because it looks almost like a U. I was researching our equalized value. It went up over 6%, which is unbelievable. So our equalized value is the property value of our school district. And when you have a levy, the amount of value or you even, or you give the levy to the value of the land. So let's say Mr. Whitmore has $100,000 worth of value and Mr. Giezzi has $200,000. Mr. Giezzi would get levied on $200,000 of value where Mr. Whitmore would be $100,000 of value. So as the equalized value goes up, the amount of levy allocated to each individual household gets lower because there's more money or there's more value that's spread out. So I estimated a 3% increase in equalized value, and it doubled. So I, it was my best guess, and the Department of Revenue actually releases those figures on October 1st. The state aid, though, this one's interesting because that is all over the board. And back in 2011 is when Governor Doyle ceased taking office and Governor Walker actually took office. And it's pretty evident in the 11, or the 12, 13, 13, 14, and 14, 15 where our state aid skyrocketed. And as Governor Walker's remained in office, it declined a bit, but not, you know, not so drastic. And I think the legislature had a lot to do with that. And then in 1920, lo and behold, Governor Evers came on board, and we got more state aid. This is all politically driven. So how you can predict state aid is beyond me. So it's a very political statement for every governor that takes office. So our, once we figure out how much revenue we receive in property taxes and state aid, and that's driven by our revenue limit worksheet, then we can look at our expenses. And our expenses for our operating funds, which is Fund 10 and 27, is illustrated, you know, in, on the screen. These salaries and benefits represent about 66% of our operating budget. Now, that is a little low because typically it's between maybe 70, 72%. But with our declining enrollment and our FTEs, it does make sense that we're only, that we have 66% of our budget in salaries and benefits. We also have non-capital, capital, objects, debt, insurance, and other. So our total operating budget is $16,081,492. So this is the slide that just shows you our operating expenditures in basically a pie graph form. So you can see the mountain, or the blue area represent our salaries and benefits, which is a bulk, the bulk of our, of our expenses. This is our revenue. So we receive revenue from local, inter-district, intermediate, state, federal, and other. Now, the blue represents our local tax, our local funding, which is our property taxes. And the purple represents our state. When they talk about two-thirds funding at the state level, our graph should look mostly purple and a portion of it blue. But we're the exact opposite. We are more, more than two-thirds funded, or, you know, we're half-funded by the local taxpayers, and it looks like only one-third funded by the state. So when they talk about two-thirds funding, they're not talking about Nacusa. So here's the budget by fund. We actually budget for general funds, special education, debt service, food service, and community service fund. And it just lists the revenues and expenditures of each. We're projecting a $218,331 deficit for our general fund next year. We actually levy for three funds. We levy for our general fund, our debt service, and our community service fund. Our total levy is $11,114,630 with a corresponding mill rate of $10.13. And we're gonna take a look at the history of our levy and our mill rate in our next couple of slates. So this is our mill rate. This year, we're projecting a $10.13 mill rate per thousand. Last year, we were at $10.55. We are levying more, but our mill rate is lower because of our increased equalized value. Now, if our equalized value decreased by 6%, our mill rate would probably be close to $10.80. So our equalized value increase, you know, really helps our school district. It helps the taxpayers, really. Our mill rate is at $11 million, and it's a, less than a 2% increase from last year. So even though we, like I said, even though we have more levy, which is only a less than 2% increase, the mill rate has decreased because of our equalized value. The auditors also like business managers to talk about community service fund. They want to make sure the community understands the community service fund and what they're paying for for our school district. So we always include it as part of the annual meeting. So as part of the school district of Nacusa Strategic Plan, which the board has created, one of the goals is to increase parent-to-community involvement. And our community service fund allows us to do that. The next slide tells you exactly what we are paying for, what the taxpayers are paying for in the community service fund. And it's heavily audited every single year. So what we say we are spending in our Fund 80 fund is actually what we're spending on a funding. And that's my presentation, so if you have any questions.
Did you miss putting your revenue worksheet?
Well, I had to play with it, so yes, I did.
There's a lot of work that, Lynn, thank you very much for that presentation. Over the last several weeks, we've spent a lot of hours going over the numbers and talking, you know, as a board about, you know, how we're, how we're going to move towards the future. Any questions from, for Lynn based on her presentation? And Terry's, and Terry's message, he alluded to some of the, some of the, some of the issues that, that we as a district have needs for. And I'd like to, first of all, recognize the amount of body of work that's been done by our administrative staff, by our teachers, at, at being fiscally responsible and looking at, you know, how we can spend the dollars that we have most effectively. Recognizing that, that there are unmet needs that currently we, we lack the funding for. One of the discussions had to do with, you know, what do we do as a board? And we at this time would like to present a resolution from the Board of Education. With that in mind, I'd like to just kind of let the individual board members talk about a little bit, about some of the things that they feel strongly about, and then, and then close up with the reading of the resolution. Anybody, do you want to start, left to right? Where do you want to start? Cody, you're up.
I'll go first. So for me, the biggest thing regarding the resolution is athletic improvement. 60% or a little bit more, 60% of our student body is actually in athletics or is an athlete. And right now, our track can't currently hold any track meets. You can barely even practice on it. And that's a big concern to me because athletics give students another chance to excel at something. And long story short, if it wasn't for my full ride track scholarship, I probably never would have been able to go to college. So, you know, I'm asking for the community's support and everybody's support to help, you know, push the referendum through to help support the track and the athletes in our district. There is a big need there. We can also generate revenue through conference, sectionals, regionals, events like that will help give back to our district and community. It'll also help our athletes excel in that. And I think we just owe it to our athletes. And like I said, I really would appreciate everyone's support in pushing that forward so we can give our community some events to, to look at, along with helping our athletes and the student body grow in regards to sports and athletics. So that's all I gotta say in terms of that.
Thank you, Cody.
As part of our operational portion of our referendum that we want to present to the community, there are a few basic needs that we have to have in order to keep up with the strategic plan that we put together. Some of those things are our virtual instructor. You heard before that our virtual school has really exploded. And so we're shorthanded in our virtual area. We need a district social worker. We need K-5 math interventionists and elementary school behavioral interventionist, technical education instructor. We, we've had only one tech ed teacher in the high school for several years this year. We were shorthanded. We finally do have an instructor coming on the 1st of November. We haven't had a tech ed person in the middle school for a long while. We really need that to happen because all of the businesses in the area that are tech, technical businesses are encouraging us to teach more tech ed in our schools. So we're looking for a tech ed instructor to be added. And we also need a family and consumer science instructor, among other needs in our school district.
Thank you.
I'd like to, you know, go with what Cody said. Last year, or last two years, I've been involved with the softball program. First, at the high school level, just kind of being a volunteer assistant. And then last year, coaching the seventh grade girl softball team. And the facilities there, they, you know, they, they're getting very outdated. We need fencing. We need lighting would be very nice. And dugouts, and then the infield needs to be reworked on, on both the varsity and the JV field. And it's not like we would throw the old fencing out because Jim Carroll approached me last week and was wondering if we could get the fencing over at the middle school to put some fences up on some of the fields that are in the back there, which would, which would work nice. And I know for a fact that would be good because over there, that's where I would normally practice. And the fields are not the best to practice on over there. So we really need to look at what we're offering our, our kids in for, in, in the, in the form of the athletic experience. And it's just, you know, it, it just needs a little TLC. So anyways, I, I'm just asking that you support these referendums.
Thank you.
I'll just talk briefly, because, I mean, these are all no brainers, but this really is too. We have to be, and we've done it in recent years as looking at our compensation packages to our staff. And, you know, we made major changes as a district to how we compensate our, our staff. But going forward, we need to be in a position to have the resources to continue to offer competitive salaries and packages to, you know, attract teachers and, and keep the teachers that we have. And we also have to have the resources to support our staff. So it's one thing to, to talk like that, but we, we really do need the resources so we can take action on that and to, you know, stay on top of our competitive compensation models.
Thank you, Brian. You know, and there's, there's, each one of us has brought these, these, these ideas along with administration, the thoughts, to the table and really, you know, representing those individuals that, that stood up and voted for us and chose us to be in the school board. And, you know, this is a, this resolution is a, is a means for us to say that this is gonna be at the top of our list and that we need to evaluate, you know, additional funding strategies. And as Terry alluded, there will be a survey going out here in the next week. And next week, or the laughter. We will be having a informational meeting. The, the survey will be due on November 25th. We'll be having, and it can be done, there'll be paper copies mailed to all of the stakeholders in our district. The paper, it can either be completed by paper or completed online. We'll be hosting an informational meeting on November 21st at the Humke Elementary School Library. And on the survey itself, the survey is going to give us information on, on where people rank, you know, their priorities within our district. I would like to say that with the work that, that Lynn has done in administration, we're at a, we're at an ideal point to move forward. And I think a lot of people are gonna be quite surprised at the numbers that are out there. But with that in mind, I'd like to read this resolution. And we actually, as a board, have a copy here that we're gonna be signing. Here we go. Be it resolved, the school board of the Nacusa School District recognizes the need for additional funding for the. Be it resolved, the school board of the Nacusa School District recognizes the need for additional funding for the following. Staffing, equipment upgrades, capital expenditures for track and field upgrade replacement, and other improvements for athletic facilities. Revenue, revenue limits as set by the state of Wisconsin do not provide the necessary funds to address these shortcomings. Instructional needs at this time within our district at a minimum include the addition of the following positions. Virtual instructor, district social worker, K five math interventionist, entering elementary school behavioral interventionist, technical education instructor, and family and consumer science instructor. Capital improvement, capital improvement projects at a minimum are identified as replacement upgrade of the track and field facility as at this time is unusable. The softball improvements. In addition, we have much needed equipment upgrades in our technical education department to support current and future technical education programming. Therefore, the Nacusa School Board, as elected by the stakeholders of this district, is stating that we must investigate and implement funding options to allow the district to provide for the instructional needs as described above in accordance with our strategic plan as well as providing for adequate resources for students' extracurricular activities. We have a lot of work in front of us and we'll be, we'll be looking towards our community for guidance and support in that area. So I would like to thank everybody for the time they've put in on this. And, you know, Terry and Lynn and administrators here, the work that you've done on this. So we have a challenge ahead of us. I think this will be a defining moment in our, in our time here. We're passing around that resolution. I'm going to keep it brief for Brian. At this time, I request a motion that the sum of eleven million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars be levied and assessed against all taxable property of the school district of Nacusa to pay the expenses of the school district for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. And that said amount be placed in the general fund, debt service fund, and community service fund as budgeted. We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. The school, the current school board monthly salary is two hundred dollars per month. Do I have a motion in regard to the salary for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year? Motion on the floor for the monthly salary of two hundred dollars per month for school board members? We have a first? We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Transportation. I ask for a motion that transportation students be left to the discretion of the school board for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. First and seconded by Cody or Brian. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Depository for school funds and hiring a school auditor. May I have a motion that the depository for school funds and hiring of a school auditor be left to the discretion of the school board? We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Authorize the school board to borrow funds. I request a motion that the school board be authorized to borrow funds if necessary for the operation of the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Authorize the sale of tangible school district property. I request a motion to approve the selling of tangible school district property to the discretion of the school board. We have a first and a second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. May I have a motion? This is in regards to the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one annual meeting date. May I have a motion to leave the date for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one annual meeting to the discretion of the school board? First and a second. All, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Very good. New business. Is there any new business? No new business. At this time, I request a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
I saw you were getting itchy there.
He was ready to, he had, he was like, Brian, I think.
I request a motion to adjourn. We have a motion and second. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, I would like to thank everybody for being here this evening. I'd like to call the regular, regular schedule board meeting for October to order. Roll call, please.
Brian Geezy.
Present.
Cody Brubisky.
Present.
David Trent.
Present.
Brian Mahan.
Present.
And I am present.
For those who are able, stand in pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we'll have a virtue card reading, Mr. Rashinsky.
Determination. You focus your energy and efforts on task and stick with it until it is finished. Determination is using your willpower to do something when it isn't easy. You are determined to meet your goals even when it is hard or you are being tested. With determination, we make our dreams come true. You are practicing determination when you believe what you are doing is important. Set goals for yourself. Stay focused without being distracted. Keep going if it gets difficult. Ask for help when you need it. Finish what you start. Affirmation. I am determined. I set goals and keep going until I achieve them. I get things done. I stay focused on my purpose. Determination.
Thank you, Patrick. Thank you. The guidelines for our school board. With an open mind, we will establish an atmosphere that allows expression of all views even when views are not in line with all members. We will work collaboratively with the district administrator by having open and honest conversations around district priorities. We will work collaboratively with all stakeholders to monitor key indicators so that equitable teaching and learning results in high achievement. We will work toward building a trusting environment where both students and staff can reach their full potential and celebrate successes in academics, the arts, and athletics. At this time, I'd welcome any public comments. Public comment? Okay, we're going to move on to our CWSA update. Do we have an update this evening?
Amy Pluno.
Amy, Ms. Amy Pluno?
Yeah.
Very good. You're on, my dear.
Mary, thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to apologize that we haven't been here for a while. We've kind of gotten out of sync with our meetings and with what's going on here too, so I apologize for that.
I apologize for not being at your meeting.
Last night, yeah. We had one yesterday. So we kind of discussed in our meeting, just a quick little thing too. So this is my last and final year on the Governance Council, no matter who twists my arm. I've been on it for six years. AMS has been removed for three, so I'm kind of not losing my passion, but it's, needs to change. So we're going to work on recruiting a little bit more at the next showcase. So inviting, that is during the AMS open house too, so we're kind of hoping to kind of work with some parents. And we have all new sixth graders, obviously, so we have a whole fresh set of parents to talk to and to hopefully convince that this is a great thing to do and a great way to get involved in your kid's education a little bit more hands-on. So that is, how do we say, November? Seven. Seven, thank you. So we're going to try to either have a council table outside the classrooms, maybe some kind of short presentation before they start looking at the projects just to get a little bit more help on the council. So that's that. So, so we have new sixth graders, obviously, that have started this year. So that is a little bit of a challenge for the teachers just because last year everyone knew kind of what to expect and what was going on. This year, they're throwing some new students in there, so they're still trying to get their groove down on, on the whole thing, which is, it's going all right. We're getting some new students supposedly the end of the month, so we're at twenty-one right now. So we should have a couple more by the end of the month. That's what we were told at our meeting yesterday, so hopefully that is true, which would be great. So then we'd be up to about twenty-three, twenty-four students, which would be a really good target for us, for numbers. So that would be nice. Another thing that they wanted me to mention is that they've started working with some new coding products. So they're, they're using Scratch coding. No idea what that means, but it's a new program that they're using and they really like it. I don't know anything about it, but they also have replaced Project Lead the Way, which was no longer working well for them. And they are using a new program called Engineering is Everywhere. Better program, cheaper, easier for the teachers to get their plans and all that stuff off of it. I believe Rapids District uses it, so they have a little bit of a, they can talk to other teachers in the Rapid School District about it if they have questions. But it just seems to be an easier program to use than Project Lead the Way, which was a little bit more difficult all the way around. So those are some of the updates that I have. I think that's what I needed to say. Oh, and we kind of talked a little bit too more about like the referendum talk too. We'd just be interested to be on top of it and really know what's going out to the public as the council.
Sure, sure. And the transparency is what we're seeking.
Yes.
I would like to first of all, thank you for your service on the CWSA Governance Council. And we do get to work with you for the next year, right?
You would?
We get to work with you for the next year.
Oh, yeah, yeah, until May.
And I want to congratulate, congratulate you on your daughters and doctoring with the National Honor Society.
Thank you, thank you.
That's something that's always nice to see parents up there and those students that have worked so hard.
Been a goal hurs for a long time.
And a lot of those students up there went through CWSA.
Yes, they did. There was a handful of them that did, which I think really says something about what we're doing.
Yeah, good point.
So thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Do we have a way to add an update?
No, we do not.
Very good. Overarching results, overarching results is something we review on a monthly basis. And we have, we have some new people in every month and we're really excited about it. It's the high school turn and I'm going to turn it over to Terry for her.
Actually, I'm going to turn it over to Kate, let him.
Okay. So we have kind of a two-pronged presentation tonight. So first, Susan Baldwin, who is our new associate principal, and I think most of you have met her, but maybe not in this role as AP at the high school, is going to talk about the cell phone policy and what we're seeing to this point. And then Mike Shanefeld, who is one of our science teachers at the high school and has a couple of new courses where he's utilizing the property quite extensively. Will be talking about place-based learning along with Sarah Winju, who is from the Wisconsin Center for Environmental Education at UWSP, who is, we're collaborating with the Center for Environmental Education on place-based learning, professional development throughout the district, at really at all three buildings, but has worked extensively with Mike. So I guess we'll start with Susan, talking a little bit about the cell phone policy.
Sure. So I have, if you are a visual person, I made copies kind of of where we're at with the cell phone policy. All this is, is our cell phone policy and then our procedure protocol for staff to follow. So it's kind of student expectations in the classroom and staff expectations if they have to take a phone from a student if it's a distraction. So the chart that you're getting on that cover page is so far in September. Well, in the upper corner, as of October sixteenth, so this was last week, Thursday, I think, I looked at the data. We had fifty students total in the month of September that had a first violation and a second violation. Oh, there were fourteen students. First violation is they turn their phone into the office, get it back at the end of the day. Second violation is they turn it into the office for five days straight, each day, morning, and then they get it at the end of the day. That's a total of sixteen percent in September and then for the first violation and then four percent for the second violation. So then in October, halfway through the month of October, we've had twenty-three additional students on their first violation for a total of seventy-three students in September and October, which is twenty-three percent. First violation. And then second violation between the months of September and October, a total of eighteen students, so six percent. And then only one percent on their third violation. Third violation is they turn it into the office for fifteen days straight. For both the second and the third violation, they also lose their pride pass, so they can't leave for study halls or lunch. And so that's kind of the overarching update there where we're at.
Do they lose their pride pass for five days and then fifteen days?
Or, okay. Yep, along with their phone.
And, you know, certainly what we're receiving back in terms of from teachers is that the learning environment is much improved. And, you know, in student wise, I mean, Eleanor, you're here to speak for all the students. You know, certainly, you know, many students are, most, the overwhelming majority of students are very understanding of the reason behind why. In fact, we had one student who, one former student who graduated, who came back to do some observation time earlier. And so he had never been in the classroom with this policy, obviously, and he said, wow, this would have been really hard on me. But I sure wish it had been here because now I'm struggling in class with finding myself meaningless, just kind of flipping through Facebook for no purpose, no reason, so.
What are other students saying, Eleanor?
I don't really know much about it.
Are the students, in your experience within the class, are they adjusting well to it, you think?
I think so.
They're just like, okay, this is the way it is?
Yeah.
I think it's helped. We've really, staff across the board has really tried to emphasize the reason why it's important and it really is to engage them in their learning so that they can, you know, I mean, you don't know what you're missing if you disengage for a couple of minutes to check the notification. That turns into more and more minutes. And it's just easy to lose track of time that way. So because we've been upfront and we've had reminders, I think that's really helped students with, you know, of course, there's a few students who have a problem with it, but for the most part, they understand what we're coming from and they know what we're trying to do, so, you know, they might not like it, but they, they're okay with it. They understand it.
Yeah, and it wasn't like we blindsided anybody with this policy. I mean, we had gone through a lengthy process to get here. You know, and so everyone coming into the school year knew what the policy was going to be, had had their, had had an opportunity to give their input on the policy and so.
Could I just add one thing? We, we just finished up our, around, uh, surveys with our staff around culture. And well, this month, the overarching, or these three months, the overarching theme is rigor, high expectations, learning options for all kids. So in the culture survey at the high school, I noted some comments from teachers about how the rigor and the attention to coursework has improved since the cell phone policy. So that's a great celebration. Good?
Thank you for your work on that. I think it's a good thing. Very much. And everybody's worked. It was, it was a big, good team.
And you got to meet Susan.
And we got to meet Susan. We wish her good luck. We wish her good luck up there. Congratulations, number one, on getting there. And good luck throughout this year. You're going to need it.
She's doing a great job.
She's already, she's already scared of it. Right away, Brian. Good job. She's a key giver. Great practice right off the bat.
Thank you very much.
And then, uh, next, so Mr. Shanefeld and Ms. Winju will talk about place-based learning and, uh, and then specifically how we're, what we're doing at the high school in regards to place-based, and Mr. Shanefeld specifically, some of what he's doing, so.
Um, well, thank you for having me here and for inviting, inviting me here. Uh, my name's Sarah Winju. I'm with the Wisconsin Center for Environmental Education. Uh, we're an outreach center within the College of Natural Resources at U W Stevens Point. Um, the Center for Environmental Education, if you're not familiar with it, um, we've been around for about thirty, well, going on thirty years next year. Um, we have a di-, couple different programs within the center. One of them is the LEAF program, the Forestry Education Program. And one of them is KEEP, the K, the K twelve Energy Education Program. Um, and we also are a key partner with the Wisconsin, um, Green and Healthy Schools Program, which is a statewide, statewide program in partnership with D P I and D N R. So, we are launching our Place-Based Education Initiative with, uh, in partnership with NACUSA, and we're really excited about this. Um, because historically, um, so over the last thirty years, we've provided mostly professional development resources to advance, um, natural, um, sustainable communities, human and natural communities, um, across Wisconsin. But we've done it more in, in, with individual teachers or groups of teachers in districts across the state. Um, but we really know and understand how important it is to do it at a community level, really to engage everyone in the, the, the school district as well as the community to really make change happen, not just one person or a couple people. Because we know that's really difficult to do when you don't have a team supporting you to, to really make change. Um, so we're really excited about this opportunity. Uh, place-based learning research shows that schools that use the environment or their place as a context for learning, um, report, report higher grade levels and standardized test scores in reading, writing, math, science, and social, social studies, so across, um, different disciplines. Um, and it's that opportunity for students to really engage in their community and their place to make their learning relevant. Um, so instead of learning some examples, instead of learning measurement or graphing, um, in their classroom, really going outside, utilizing their space, utilizing their community to engage in learning these important concepts, but in meaningful ways and really making connections. Um, likewise, uh, learning important science concepts, instead of learning them from a textbook or from videos, um, using maybe their school building, your classroom, your community to learn these important science concepts and really make, having those concrete, tangible experiences. Um, so working with KEEP, last year, we identified, uh, a few goals that we're, um, looking forward to continuing to work on over the next two years or so. Um, we know this takes time. It's not something that happens overnight. Uh, some teachers are, are using their place, their environment amazingly well, uh, but we really want to make sure that we integrate it across the curriculum so that it isn't just something that happens down the hallway in Mr. Shanefeld's class, that this is really, you know, incorporated and embraced as a district. Um, so some of the goals we identified were, um, increasing environmental literacy and sustainability of the school and community by featuring the environmental literacy and sustainability standards that were adopted last, about a year and a half ago by D P I. So these are the standards that we, um, will be u- using, focusing on, really making, um, a, a focused uh, attempt to connect with those in, in, in the curriculum. Um, increasing civic engagement with students, um, enhancing the value of the community or what people, including students, think of their community and how to enhance the community's support, uh, and then increase understanding of career opportunities that are available in the, the local community. Um, we are administering a baseline s- study, a survey for those who we, who we're interacting with. Um, and we'll be continuing to do that just to get some data so that we can, in a few years, measure that, that change. Um, a few of the things I just wanted to note, um, this is a really low number so far that have participated in the survey. But, um, how often do you consult the environmental literacy and sustainability standards? Um, when developing lessons, twenty-five percent sometimes, sixty-seven percent never, so we want to make sure that this is, this becomes a tool um, to help engage students into learning with their environment more. Um, I use my community as a tool in my teaching, forty percent sometimes, thirty percent never. Um, my students practice civic engagement through volunteering and community service, sixty-four percent a little, and eighteen percent not at all. Um, and then my students feel like they and their actions make a difference, seventy-two point five percent a few, a few. So, we're hoping that some of those numbers will increase with our efforts over the next few years. Um, so far, we've held two, uh, professional development workshops this past summer with this core group of teachers. Um, one of them focused on utilizing these standards and another, uh, focused on using the outdoor space, the school grounds, the school forest, um, in their classes. Um, I was able to attend the Business Educational Alliance meeting last spring and, and hope to continue to, to attend and engage in that, that group more. Um, met with the elementary school planning team a couple weeks ago, um, and we'll be providing them this week, I'll send it tomorrow. Um, a short list of easy things to do with students outside, so that was just, how do I, how do I get out, what do I do outside if, if I'm going outside? Not in-depth lessons, just those easy things that take little to no crap, you know, just to get students to really engage in just their immediate outdoor spaces a little bit, a little bit more. But things are, amazing things are already happening in the district, um, and we wanna really highlight those as well and showcase them throughout the state. Um, one of our staff is part of the School Forest Advisory Committee and will continue to, to, um, work with that group. We have registered the high school as a green and healthy school this summer. Um, and also one of the elementary teachers, um, started the process to register the elementary school as a green and healthy school as well. So we hope to really continue to, to work on that to just document everything that's already happening, 'cause there's so much happening. Document it and then celebrate it and talk about it, um, so people know all the cool things that are already happening and that will continue to happen. Um, and then one of the things that we, um, are trying is we are providing these reflection journals for, for teachers so that as they try new things, um, they take their students outside, they, they try to incorporate more of the place, they can reflect on, how did that go? What would I do differently next time? And then also connect it to those four goals, um, that I already shared and how, how is this activity or this experience, um, connecting our students to the, to the community more? Um, so we're hoping to, to revisit those and continue to build off our learning over the next couple years.
Okay, so I've been trying to, um, utilize the school forest as much as possible and utilize our, our place, I guess, and, uh, around our community. Um, and I think I have it easier than most teachers because I have new classes that, uh, kind of are built around, you know, going outside. Uh, but we do have a couple new classes. We have a Fisheries, Forestry and Wildlife course, um, that's a dual credit through mid-state, uh, which is pretty neat. Um, and then we also have more kids now enrolled in environmental science, and so between both those classes, I've been able to, um, get outdoors a lot and really utilize our, our facility here, uh, which is probably one of the best, um, you know, facilities on the school campus that I, I think I've ever seen in a, in a district. Um, and so the nice, you know, it's really nice now you have to, you know, we can be outside from my room out to the school forest in, you know, five minutes, and that's with taking attendance. Um, and some of the things that we've, you know, done, like are simple things, just like going out and doing plant and tree identification. Um, looking at, um, different types of adaptations that the plants have had, and we can kind of relate that to their habitat and why they had those adaptations and how they, um, you know, um, help enable survival for those species. Um, we, uh, for our Fisheries, Forestry and Wildlife course, we've been looking at, um, doing a lot of orienteering, so compass work, um, pacing. Um, and, uh, tomorrow, we're actually gonna go out and do some soil profiling in different habitats, so we can kind of compare and contrast, um, different soil types, um, through there. Excuse me, I've got a cold to, to set up. Um, and so ultimately, uh, and that class is gonna lead to a large, uh, timber cruise where we're gonna go out and look at forest management and assess the value of, uh, um, you know, a plot of land that they'll kind of take on as their own and, um, utilize that through the year. And then, of course, our favorite is the, uh, the body farm, where we, uh, look at the decomposition rates of, uh, pig legs out there in our, uh, forensic science course, um, which is kind of neat, um, it kind of grows at the same time, but, um, you know, we, we look at the different stages of decomposition and so we could, um, you know, try to identify how long a body's been up there if it were. Um, and we also look at the, you know, entomology, uh, look at the insects that are in there and try to identify those as well. And so, I think, um, you know, there's, there's other things that we, we hope to do, like utilize, um, more resources within the community, like Don Tarr and, and Erko. Um, and, you know, by collaborating with those, um, companies, you know, it gives the students more opportunity, um, you know, a, a, a sense of community. It also gives them, um, more ideas as far as maybe career choices in the future, things like that. Um, and hopefully then, you know, when they go off to school, they may come back to our community and, and stay here, so it's kind of. Yeah, I think I'm also going to be, um, working with, uh, Julie Shutter in the spring for our horticulture class. Um, so I'm excited about that and, so. We also have a new machine in our room, so if you're in the high school, you should come and check this out. It's really cool. It's called the Green Machine. It's a, um, large hydroponic growing system that we were able to get through, uh, pranked through Wood Commie. Um, so it grows up to two hundred eighty-eight plants, about five and a half feet tall and about four feet wide. Um, so we just built it. We got it last week and I had a couple students build it for me. Um, and we'll start utilizing that, uh, here hopefully in the next two weeks.
So, the, the nutrition program benefit from some of that lettuce or something from there, or?
Um, yeah, possibly. I mean, there's some, I mean, there are some, um, guidelines to using it. Um, and so hopefully we can collaborate with some other,
Yeah.
you know, some other, um, content areas. Um, I know, uh, hopefully we can work with the, uh, school lunch program too and implement some of these, uh, you know, fresh organic vegetables within that. And it gives us, you know, part of the thing the kids have to, um, learn, you know, safe food handling through it. Uh, they have to track the pounds and the type of produce grown and submit, um, you know, some, some data on that when we harvest it. Um, so I think it's gonna be a really cool aspect to have in the room. Yeah, it's pretty neat.
And just being part of the College of Natural Resources and the university as a whole, we have a lot of different, um, student groups and other, and faculty who, who want to connect more with surrounding communities. Um, and so, uh, you know, we have a water lab and wildlife biologists and, uh, waste composting experts on campus, so we have a lot of opportunity to, to connect, um, and, and make some, make some good connections and build some relationships. Um, so that students from U W S P can come in possibly and work alongside NACUSA students to show like, oh, this is what I could be doing? This is really cool, and that there are jobs i- in these, um, areas that are right here local, that, that they may never have even, ever been exposed to.
And that, and I'm gonna throw in here too, part of, uh, environmental sciences, uh, last year, Susan and I collaborated on, on a big unit, on a big plan of action that the kids come up with an idea, something that they could change in a positive, to, you know, affect the environment positively. Um, so through that, you know, kids come up with these ideas of composting, um, trying to reduce the amount of plastic that we use and plastic waste and things like that. Um, you know, i- ideas to recycle and stuff like that.
Here in the school, just.
Yeah, yeah, that we can implement right here.
In the world, but like here it's, it's cool.
And so they come up with ideas. We haven't yet implemented, um, those, but we could easily, easily do that and, um, you know, have the kids implement those in the school district. It's fun.
We have a question.
Any thought to, uh, knocking on doors in San Valley? I think that a seven thousand acre conservancy over there that may be in Buick Valley?
Yeah, we've talked about that. Now, yeah, I'd love to go and, uh, take my class out there and, and, um, yeah, that'd be really neat. I've yet to see that too, and so I'd love to get out there and, um, you know, and we have another, you know, facility, a piece of property in, in Rome that, um, I'd like to go out and look at, especially after we've had those, uh, timber cut out of there, you know, need for the kids to come see the, you know, succession, how it's coming to grow back and everything. So, we have a lot of, a lot of opportunities here.
Awesome.
Thank you very much.
Well, it's great to hear about your partnership. We've got some testimony in the bag there. What class are you in?
I'm in Intro to Fisheries.
Well, tell us something about it.
Lot different than any other science class, just a lot of outdoor activities. Never really been exposed to it so much, so.
You're learning a lot?
Yeah.
I'm kind of quite en- envious, 'cause we never had anything like this when I was in school. You'd be lucky if, you'd be lucky if you got to go on a nature walk one, one day out of the year, you know?
Was it, when I was in there last week, the kids, they're like, can you just help us get a field trip to that Rome forest? And I was like, well, sure, but I'm not sure that they'd asked him yet, so.
It's been a rough fall with the rain issue too. It's been harder, you know, we'd like to get out. I've been waiting all week to, to get outside and do some soil profiling, and so hopefully tomorrow will be the.
It's gonna be cold tomorrow.
Yeah, yeah. But, I mean.
Butt dry.
Yeah. Most of these kids hunt fish all year, so they're, they're used to it.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Well, miss, miss, miss Lee here.
Well, where is you? Congratulations on a great homecoming.
Oh, yeah, yes.
You did a lot of work, I mean, did you hear stuff hard tonight? Great job on it, though.
Thank you. Yeah, that was a lot of work. Our council pulled it off, not a lot of time. Um, so, the, we made notes for what not to do, what to do. The penny war that we had was successful, but, um, it was just forgotten about until the last minute, so we had to throw it together quickly, but it was still successful and we got, um, food to the Backpack for Kids program, so that was good too. Um, and then now it's on to the next thing, so, um, my view going into October, um, was to continue thinking about every month, what, what could be due. Um, and October is, uh, Bullying Awareness Month, and so, uh, we threw around a couple ideas, but what we really landed on was making sure that every student felt like wanted in a way. So, this Friday, our entire school will be doing an activity where, um, they pick a name from their advisory in their homeroom. And they write about this person that they pick, and they write, um, two notes and one goes to the student. Um, and the other one is gonna be put on a school chain, and we're gonna put it in the commons area of the high school. So there'll be about, uh, four hundred different chain links in our high school, just of, um, kind things about to every student, so. Um, I'm really excited about that. That's, I'm really excited for Friday. Um, and then the other thing this weekend is, um, F B L A and, uh, Link Crew and, uh, National Honor Society and Student Council are doing haunted hallways on Saturday, so, yeah.
Did you get enough candy?
Oh, uh, I don't know. I don't think so. So, last year, I know that the teachers had to make three different runs to Dollar General and to take the pigs, so, um, any candy is really appreciated, but, um, I think we're expecting around five hundred cakes, is what I heard. So. Yeah.
So donations or candy are needed, okay?
Donations were very much needed, but.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Saturday, um, on Halloween. Thank you very much for your time here tonight, and very much look forward to next one. So I'm pretty worried about that, that chain. We should get some pictures of that.
Oh, there will be.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson, uh, P I twenty-six, Education for Employment.
Oh, wait, we gotta.
Oh. Oh, I forgot a couple people. Brian!
I'm messing with how many things we have on the agenda this week, so I am going to go to next month, so.
All right.
We appreciate that. No problem. I saw the agenda. I'm like, I will talk next month to you guys.
Just for you, I'm gonna make something to talk about.
Well, thank you, guys.
So, uh, so P I twenty-six, Education for Employment, this is related to academic and career plans. Um, I would like to, you know, have approval of the P I twenty-six plan that you have in the board packet, but what I would like to do is come back at a later date to report more fully on academic and career plans, um, and where we're at with, uh, with what we're doing, where we're at with advisory committees and, and different things that way. So, not, you know, we don't have significant changes in the P I twenty-six plan. It is a state requirement that it be approved by the board annually. It is a state requirement that it be approved by the board annually, so that's, that's what it's at.
Look forward to hearing about that, uh, motion, uh, and the call for a motion to approve, uh, PI twenty-six Education for Employment.
I'll push that motion.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Start College Now applications, Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, so, we had Start College Now, um, uh, applications that came up last month. But we did have a few that had slipped by us that, um, I'm just asking for approval on, even though the October first date has clearly passed. I would still just ask, most of these are related to, uh, CNA, to the Certified Nursing Assistant Program that we have through Humke. Or through Humke, at Humke, but has, uh, some quirks to it that we're just getting ironed out, so.
There you go. I had a call for a motion, uh, for the Start College Now applications.
I'll push that one too.
We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. Mr. Spring.
I'm gonna provide, uh, handout right now for the summer school report, and just gonna let you, uh, take a look at that. In fact, I just counted, I didn't know how many to make, but I, a few ladies, oh, you know what? Amy left, everybody has a copy. Very good, so I'll let that come around right now and, um. I'm gonna highlight the things that are in the packet here right now, but feel free to go ahead and look at it. The purpose of this is really just to share some information about the summer school experience that we had last year. I also want to acknowledge Lynn for helping me, uh, find a few numbers that I needed and just kinda pulling this together. Just to summarize, the print at the top of the page, we for the third year, no, for the second year had, I'm forgetting. Oh yeah, no, for the third year we were at, um, Humke Elementary, or, yeah, Humke Elementary for the second year right now, we've had summer school. So we're still into the new routine and I think it's pretty much well established. One of the things that we did do this year was also create a partnership with the city and expand more of just your one stop shop for summer experiences with the city. So it was, all that information was going out together. Uh, other things that on the front page right there, you can see the three years and how we're trending about what courses we've been off. The number of courses we've been offering and how, on how well they've, uh, they stuck and when we did the initial application. And that's the purpose of that stuff on the first page. On the second page, you can see the summer school faculty and course location. And the purpose of that is just, really, this is just what I like to see what's trending and you can see the bulk of our teachers are Humke teachers with the smattering of them coming from the high school. But a lot of them also individuals who we, um, contract through, and that would be the YMCA. And, or people who are working from other districts who come into our district to help make our summer school work. And that's the summary of that up there at the top there and where we've been trending on that. I also want to acknowledge the student participation at the bottom of page two, and Lynn also helped dig up some old numbers right there. You can see going across there how many kids have been participating in it over and where we're at right now. And she helped also dig up some old numbers related to the, this number of students who are participating who are non-resident. You can see those numbers stacked. And the, one of the things that I observed too is, is the number of students who are coming outside our district into our district to experience summer school. And that's an observation I had there. On page three, that's just a breakdown of, uh, the courses and who's in them and, and what's trending at each grade level. I like looking at that personally, you know, as an elementary school principal and seeing what, you know, where we're at in staffing levels. And then also I, um, add this year, I hadn't done it prior, but just courses at secondary level and what's trending right there in terms of population and who's really bringing in the kids. And that fills over onto page four. And then page four, uh, you can see expenses revenue over the last four years right now and then compared to this year right now, and you can see if we ran it at a deficit, um, of twenty-three thousand dollars approximately. With that, it's information and then welcome you to ask any questions or make any statements.
Lot of information, it's in, the, the circle data is helpful, indeed it is. No shortfalls go to the community fund. The shortfalls are covered by the community fund?
No, it's covered by the district.
Do any districts make money on summer school?
Sometimes when you don't have transportation, but then the numbers go down, so, but in my experience, not many.
We essentially do it because it's a service.
Right, right. And I know, I'd like to recognize all those individuals that put that time forward in the summertime, the teachers, the staff, the pre-k, you know, the evaluation, that's a great deal, a great body of work. And one that is so valuable for that introduction, you know, good continuity for many students, that safety, that saves them.
And good lunches for all those kids at home, I do for.
That's true, and that's something I didn't mention in there, but kids essentially come to summer school, get lunch for free.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions, guys? Okay, third Friday count in September, Miss Spring.
So, um, per DPI regulations, districts are required to have two counts a year. The first one is the third Friday in September, and that's used for the state aid formula and also for the revenue limit sheet. And then the second Friday in January is our, our second count. And that's used for the state aid, um, formula as well. The third Friday is probably the most important. So, uh, it consists of, it, it, there's a lot of steps in regards to doing a membership count. You start out with a head count, which means it's kids in seats. And then you look at all the transfer ins, those are non-resident district, non-resident students coming into our district. And you look at the transfer outs, that means our resident students that are leaving our district. And then you basically end up with the FTEs. So how many students you are able to count and include on your revenue limit formula to, um, to create, uh, the revenue limit on what you are allowed to gain in revenue in property taxes and state aid. So it's all melded together. So we're gonna look at, um, head count, transfer ins, transfer outs, and FTEs. Now this is at a district level. The blue is actually the current count, September. The red is the last January count, January of two thousand nineteen. And the gray is the, um, last September count. And when you look at our head count, and basically, yeah, our head count, um, it went up a little bit. Our, um, yeah, by two, two students from last, uh, January. But when you look at the FTEs, we, we were down about five, well, how many is it?
Five.
Five students, thanks. Can't forget. So what I did is I broke it all down, so we're gonna go through, I'm not gonna go through every single graph. But I do, um, want to look at the district levels. So this is the district level, this is brick and mortar students. So these do not include, um, virtual students. So you look at, um, ten ninety-two in last year in September, eleven oh five in, um, January of this year. And it drops down to ten sixty-eight in September of this year. So these are actually kids in our buildings. Now this number is typically used for staffing purposes. Okay? Now then I further broke it down by schools, but I'm not gonna go into that, you have it in your packet. And you can see it's AMS, you know, all the way through. This is district head count virtual. And you can see, um, we did have a cap of one fifty in Sep-, you know, for this year, and we were at one forty-eight. That's an increase from one oh nine and ninety-eight from previous years. And again, I broke this down by school, so you can review that data in your packet. This is the district transfer ins for brick and mortar. So, um, because we increased the cap on our virtual, our transfer in population really exploded. We went from, you know, a hundred to a hundred and thirteen. That's, well, that's brick and mortar, I'm sorry, that doesn't include virtual, I apologize. So that's just regular kids in seats, so that's awesome. Okay. And I broke it down by school. This is the district transfer in virtual, and you can see it goes from seventy-eight to one hundred and twenty. That's because of the cap that we, that we increased, so. And I also broke down that, broke all that down by school as well.
It's a very interesting number on the brick and mortar. You know, I think when I, when I joined the school board, we had more students transferring out than transferring in. I believe last year, or the year before, it was the first year that we had more kids transferring into the district than out. That is a huge statement. That's something that we cannot, we gotta stand on that. To be, to know that more students are coming into our district than leaving is a, is a, is a testament to the work that's being done, um, through, through all the troubles and tribulations we've been through over the last six or seven years. Something great has come of it, so I wanna recognize that.
Now these are the district transfer outs, and I, you know, I didn't break them down between brick and mortar and virtual because they're transferring out, so they're not really coming to our school district. Uh, the transfer outs increased a bit from January and from last September. And I also broke down all the transfer outs by school as well. Um, this is the important number, this is our district FTE. We, uh, were at eleven twenty-three in January and we dropped down to eleven oh five. This is actually what we receive funding on from the state level. So we need to work on our FTEs. So I submitted my report to DPI, you know, on time, so it's not gonna compromise our state aid, which is great. But I just, you know, it's good data to have, and I'll, I'll do this again in January. If you like the format of this, I mean, it's a lot of data to look at and study, but I can certainly do that in January too. And I, I won't, you know, go through it in depth or anything like that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Very good. For those that may have just joined us, we had our annual meeting prior to our rigorous, rigorous school board meeting. At the annual meeting, we approved the, the tax levy. At this time, I, the board president, I would like to call for a motion to sum up eleven million, one hundred and fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars be levied and assessed against all taxable property of the school district of Nacusa to pay the expenses of the school district in two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. And that said amount be placed in a general fund, debt service fund, and community service fund as budgeted.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call vote please.
Cody Dubelski.
Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
I go yes, Brian Mahan.
Yes.
Brian Geezy.
Yes.
Brian, could we also approve that nineteen twenty budget as well, please? I know it's not on.
Yep, I'm sorry. I'd also, I'd like to call for a motion to approve the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty budget as presented in our packets and as described in our annual meeting.
So, second.
We have a first and a second, roll call please.
Cody Dubelski.
Yes.
David Schmidt.
Yes.
I go yes, Brian Mahan.
Yes.
Brian Geezy.
Yes. And just to note, on the annual meeting, for those that who, who weren't able to view that, we had a discussion about some of those things that our district needs that we currently don't have funding for. The board came, had, had a formal resolution on investigating how we can fund those activities. There'll be a survey going out to, um, all, all of our stakeholders in our district in the next week or so that are gonna ask about some of those things that, that we need for our future as a district. The survey will be sent, it'll be in a paper form, you can either fill it out in paper or fill it out, out online. It's gonna be due in the, due, due back on the twenty-fifth. We will be having an informational meeting on the twenty-first of November in the Humke Library. And this, this, these things that we have unmet needs based upon the funding that we have, um, from the state. And, and the revenues that we're allowed, uh, to have under the revenue limit worksheet. So it's just informational and we, you know, we encourage you to please look at that information carefully. It will guide our decisions of the board in the December, January time period when we have to really seriously look at what we're going to do as a district, so, thank you. Policy governance, any questions so far, guys? We're good? Policy governance, OE ten. Muriya, would you read the writing of policies to you?
Absolutely, OE ten, communicating with the public. The district administrator shall assure that the public is adequately informed about the condition and direction of the district. With that, the district administrator will assure the timely flow of information, appropriate input, and strategic two-way dialogue between the district and citizens that build understanding and support for district efforts. Would you like me to highlight a few of that?
Hit, hit a couple of big ones and then we'll talk about.
So last Thursday we met and we talked about this policy, a couple of the highlights. The district continues to work on a communication plan. And, uh, what we've got tonight, we shifted the showcase and that was around, um, rigor, high level expectations. And then what's happening in each of the buildings, you're gonna see pictures of kids involved in rigorous, high, high expectations around the classroom and learning. So we've continued to really focus in on that and try to push out through newsletters, uh, through Facebook, all of the things that are happening in the district around, um, of that, that level of commitment. Uh, community newsletters, uh, we've had some changes, uh, within the last year. The, the style of the community newsletter's gone out, and it's also gone out to all of our stakeholders. Building newsletters, uh, have been going out via Parent Square, which is what our parents are telling us they use to, that's their preferred way of getting communication, so we're delivering that through Parent Square. And I, we, last week we had a chance to look at the number of hits or number of views or number of people using Parent Square to view the newsletter, it was quite impressive. Uh, our school webpages are improved, Diana's been working hard on, uh, a new upgrade that makes it user-friendly with phones. Diana, when, is that, that's coming soon, right? For the next month?
About this week.
Awesome. Thank you for your work on that, that's been a lot. Parent, parent satisfaction survey results, so every year we look at, uh, in, in the fall, or excuse me, the spring, we collect information from our parents, the buildings, and work with their staff and really take a look at what parents are saying about the services we offer. And we try to be very responsive to that. And then we also have this strategic, uh, planning document that we handed out tonight. So this is brand new, off the presses today, and we're gonna get this out to our staff and stakeholders in the buildings. So communication, again, uh, Brian, Lynn and I, we were over and kinda kicked off the, the conversation around the possible, possibility of a referendum. So Brian's gonna be our expert on this topic and developing the strategy that we've come up with. Where all of you are gonna be going out, taking Lynn and I possibly and, and, uh, hearing from our public around that, the, the possible referendum. So lots of things happening around communication, it goes back, Lynn and Diana are kind of our head communication people. And, uh, really trying to help steer the direct district in a good direction, so, thank you Lynn and Diana.
We did not note any weaknesses with regards to this policy. One of the strengths identified was the implementation and utilization of the Parent Square, uh, communication tool. And I think that's maybe in the correct terminology.
Yep.
The data that was presented, it seems to be one that reaches people most effectively. And I've heard good things in our community and from our parents about that tool. And, you know, we have, we've already found, uh, the communication plan in and of itself a strength. It's a planned document with, um, specific timelines and specific strategies that have been implemented. But, uh, the most noted strength I had was that, uh, Parent Square.
the most noted strength I had was that Parents' Square utilization. Any other strengths?
Yeah, I, I put on the, the alert system that the school has for the text messaging, and you know, it's just good to keep, keep our students safe and secure, and it's, it's nice to know when those cancellations are happening, or weather, anything else like that, so.
And I certainly appreciate getting them to, thank you Diana. With that in mind, I'll call, I'd like to call for a motion to approve OE ten, communication with the public as presented.
All in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. B S R forward slash four, delegation of authority to the district administrator. Terry, would you please read the.
I'd be happy to. The policy statement is, the means by which the board will direct the district administrator shall be through its written results and operational expectations policies. The district administrator will be allowed any reasonable interpretation of these policies, bless you. Accordingly, the board will maintain results policies specifying defined results for specified recipients. In the same manner, the board will develop operational expectation policies which express the board's values about operational conditions and actions. Using any reasonable interpretation of board's results and operational expectation policies, the district administrator is authorized to develop administrative policies and practices. Make all decisions and take all actions he or she deems appropriate to achieve the board's results policies. As with all policy, the board results and operational expectations policies are dynamic and subject to updating and change by the board.
Thank you, Terry. This is our fourth year of the implementation of policy governance for the leaders, for the, you know, guiding how we lead our district. And this is, this document here as far as how we delegate the authority to the administrator, and then govern by policy and govern by operational expectations. It has led us to be more informed as a board than, than I ever have been in the previous five years before that. So, everybody did receive this, there were no exceptions noted. Any comments with regards to this policy? Very good. I'd call for a motion to approve B S R forward slash four, delegation of authority to district administrator, district administrator as presented. We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Consent agenda, donations, Mr. Cody Prudelski, would you mind reading those?
I don't have the paper copy, but we're at yours. Alright, donations, backpack for kids, a hundred and sixty-five dollars from Bethlehem Lutheran Church, and twenty-five dollars from Sacred Heart Collections. So thank you for those donors.
Yep, those, those donations are so important to us, thank you very much for those donations. At this time, I would call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. We have a first and a second, all in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Future meetings, agenda items. November second, Saturday, I believe, two thousand and nineteen, we're going to be attending, the board members that are able to, the Legislative Advocacy Conference, seven forty-five AM to three thirty at the Holiday Inn in Stevens Point. This is an opportunity for us as board members to learn how to, to learn what guides us from the legislative aspect with regards to the fiduciary responsibilities we have as board members. November twenty-first, referendum sharing. This is going to be an informational meeting, it's going to be held at the library at Humke Elementary School, and we encourage your participation in that. Board workshop next month will be the second Thursday, November fourteenth. The regular scheduled meeting will be November nineteenth, the third Tuesday of the month. And at this time, I will call for a motion to adjourn. All in favor, please signify, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carried, the other adjourn.